Roll call. Alvin Klein, got you. Alden Rose, Rose and Gray. Alden Brian Helm.
Aye, training.
Alden Paul Franklin here.
Have the motive to approve the agenda?
I have seconded motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to consent, contingent?
I'm not in motive to approve consent here.
I second the motion.
Alvin, come on. Alvin, say it.
Aye.
Okay, now we got public phone. There ain't nobody here.
Well, yeah, Bob Mulligan was the first one. He's not here. Sean Kipper was the second one. I don't think he's present either.
Sean ain't here either.
And the county and Vane Pritchard.
Old business is done. New business is house. House on 6.732.
You still good coming?
Yes, so am I.
Okay, you guys talk about if you know how much they want to tear it down. It's all over there. Any suggestions you wanna make about what to do?
The only thing to do, I'll, I'll, I'll get one question. Do we have the money to do that?
No, I don't agree with that. We don't. We, I mean, we have CDs, but we don't have cash in the bank, do we?
Is there any kind of thing that we can do with it for the fire department? Right, you do.
Which one you talking about, one down here? I wouldn't let it slide in. Because whenever it burnt and tore up the hole underneath and the foundation.
It's dangerous.
Yeah.
What about, did we ever get a finger on who owns that building?
Yeah.
And what they doing, just saying that, hell with it or what?
They're still putting on crates, let's try to sell the thing. So we still be late like less than a month ago, yeah, I said, but they're still selling it, you know?
Ninety-nine dollars now?
Yeah, I wonder if it could be yours.
I tell you what, use brick though, you know, somebody did tear it down. Use brick and it's very expensive. It's, it's high dollar.
Good patio.
Oh, man.
Check in on that and they say that it's soft brick and it's not worth a lot.
Oh, is it soft brick?
Yeah, it's soft brick.
And it takes a lot to, if someone wants to do that, it takes a lot to, um, wash those.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta take it.
Hell, hell.
Is this the house on 61?
Yeah.
And that the old Jordan house is what it was way back.
Well, I'm in here calling far, yeah.
Can we advertise something in the paper or something to see if we could get it cheaper yet? I don't know, I'm gonna ask, can we take bids on it? That's what I'm talking about, what I know.
I, I, if you wanna put an ad in the paper asking for more bids, you know, I, I took these guys because they're the ones that did two houses in St. Mary's and they had worked every month. So I can put it out for more if we can get some more responses.
I'll cut to you guys.
I'm like trying to look at small bids. And I noticed that on that paper just says Terry McHale's house, Paul and On, filling the hole back in. How are they gonna fill that in? Dirt?
Like brick, probably.
Oh, the brick? I thought I'd say if we get brick done.
Yeah, probably brick and a cover with dirt and, you know, grass is strong.
Absolutely, all by, I think, there's nothing down home.
But it says Paul and On, so I was kinda curious as to what there is.
It's got a lot of cushions nailed there.
That's really not a bad price. Thinking. If you don't have the money, you have the money, but it's a, it's a, it's a $50,000 eyesore. And it's a $6,800 removal. I suggest if you have the money in the bank somewhere along the line, I don't care if it's in savings, if you're gonna put the dang thing down because it's a mess. It looks terrible Gloria next year's house, but it looks terrible to this town. First thing you see when you drive in here. You know, we've got a beautiful community. We've got some nice houses up there on the block, we've got a nice store, we've got a sheriff's department, we've got great things going on here. And right in the middle of the town, we've got a tooth decay. So $6,800 is nothing we should fight over right now, it's something we see how we can afford to do it. And try to knock somebody down with a price like this, uh, when it's $6,800 to improve the city by $50,000 in view. That's what we have to look at. It's a mess. So plow it down, put it into the, to the cellar and level it off or whatever needs to be done, but I think the money would be well spent at $6,800.
If we, if the city levels this, pays the average, uh, level, does the city own that property?
No. No.
So the people that own it come back and say, that's my property. Or itself.
What, what'll happen is whatever expense we pay to demolish or haul off or whatever we do, we put as a mean on the property. So basically what'll happen is you'll have a vacant lot with a $6,800 lease against it.
Right, and we're gonna have to cut the grass.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to take care of that, huh?
Yeah.
He has to.
This is a small lot. Yeah.
We find the money to do it, I don't think, if you're done.
Dave, is there, is there any grants out there where we don't pay for that?
Well, the paperwork I gave wasn't grant, I put it and it got denied. So I, I tried with community foundation, that's the only one I know that would cover something like that.
What are you saying, David, what about?
Oh, one of the, one of the papers in there was one of the, like, attachments I sent in to, to the community foundation grant to try to get, you know, funds to, to demolish that. I mean, they were back saying that it was denied.
Did it say why?
Um, the question they asked me was the same question we just asked. If we knock it down, do we own it? I told them no. And they said, oh, okay, I'll let the board know, and then the next thing I know, I get all the listings and that. There's ways to get this done. You know, there's a time when the city needs to come together to make things work. We have churches, we have, you know.
I would say the same thing.
People, communities, we have stores, we have businesses, and we have a great community of great people here. And I think this is a necessity, something needs to be done. But when I say about coming together, I'm talking about us bringing everybody involved in this town. That means every business, every church, every person.
You know.
Say help, we need to get this thing done.
I'm sure we could get some help. But they're saying it's too dangerous for the fire department to go in and take care of it. And what we're talking about is get some help to get this $6,000 together.
Right.
Is what we'd like to do.
Yeah, I think we can do it for it. I think we're in a community that is such a bad eyesore, something that needs to be done right away, it's impossible. You know, we're probably going to fall, you know, this is our season. We're part of the Creek Colonial District. To me, that's the way I see this whole valley, what's going on here on both sides of it. And, uh, this little, this little town needs a little help from now time to time. If we come together on it, one of the first things we gotta do is take care of that house. Get rid of it.
That's the first one, another house, that's our two to take care of. We're going to want.
Baby steps.
And so what kind of ideas are you thinking about as far as?
Just anything to make money, even the fire department would help us, wouldn't you?
If we got a way to do it.
Yeah, like having work for you or anything, any money we can get together will help. So I could do something too and, you know, and we got, uh.
I mean, the best thing that actually you wanna know that is if you got a raffle, like.
I could do that, that's what I'm talking about too, a raffle. Fifty-fifty. And most people will donate it back.
They will. It's their town. We can't do it through taxes, we, you know, tax is our maximum. Uh, but we've got enough businesses here to collect on, we could talk about Marion, doesn't matter, White doesn't matter, Faders.
And I'm sure the church.
Store down the road, the churches, these people can come together. We can get $6,800 together, but I don't think this is a bad bid.
It's not. I agree.
Yeah.
Even if we can get some.
Yeah, you can have some of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you guys wanna make a motion that we talk about this or cable it right now and try to get everything together, or what?
I'm good. I'm good for voting, though, like you said. Too much, I can't remember it all.
I think we're on the right, oh, yeah. So, so.
We're gonna save it and try to get.
Gotta get back.
See if we can get anybody to have.
Okay, you still gonna try to get more bids?
Not right now.
Not yet, we'll wait.
Okay. Are you counting James?
Yes.
Their, they were on public phone. Okay, whoever wants to speak.
Uh, well, the, the main thing is we wanted to find out what it, it's gonna take to open a.
A discount store.
A little discount store over here next to the old bank building.
Will it bring more people to this town?
I'm sure, hoping it would.
Would it increase our sales tax?
I, probably.
It better.
It better if it don't, then we fail, right?
All sounds really good.
What's that?
We open that.
A player by the old bank or? You're gonna use the bank building to do it, right?
No.
The old post office right next door to it.
The old post office.
That's twenty was half. Yeah. We're hoping if we grow up big enough, we can just take over the building.
Uh, we just need to know, you know, what it's gonna take to, uh.
Get it done.
To get, get in the building.
You talking like, uh, fees and stuff like that?
Fees.
Expenses, a whole nine hours.
Yeah, what, what are you guys planning on putting in there?
Uh, it's gonna be like, uh, some bait, probably, a little bit of everything, you know? All supplies, health appliances and stuff like that.
What we're, what we're doing, I mean, we're, we're buying pallets of store closeouts.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been, we've been selling online and that's.
That goes over like apartment space.
Pain in the, that's, that's why we were late this evening, waiting on people. And I don't wait well.
Well, but, uh, David, wouldn't they have to come down and talk to Ned about, uh, the building, about all the building stuff?
Well, it, it would have to, um, pass a building inspection, which is $25, and then they have to buy business license, which is thirty. That's our only real requirements as far as.
And just, it is voting, if voting will say yea or nay to let them have, you know?
Is all the stuff gonna be inside the building?
Yes.
Okay, nothing outside.
No, there's sidewalks. Was it new merchandise or is it?
It's all new merchandise.
And it's not, it's sold lower than what you'd get in the store, like Walmart. So you got a $50 item, we sell like half or less.
How big a space, young man, do you got in there? What do you need?
It's, I believe it's, uh, I believe it's 900 square feet.
Yeah, that's not real big.
No, it's not, but.
But it's just starting out, 'cause what we're looking at right now, we're just starting out.
Yeah.
And eventually growing, 'cause we're going with it.
Oh, yeah, start out small, see what happens, nothing matter with that.
Yeah, who are you rooting this all in for?
Uh, what is his name?
My name is.
Yeah, you're right.
I won't be talking twice.
But it's up to you guys.
No, I, I had one problem as well.
I think a new business owner, tell me who that is.
We wanna, we wanna move here eventually, we're right now in St. Jen. We actually like to move down closer to our business.
We're. We've been debating for quite a while. We found a little shop in St. Jen that's probably half the size of this. And it was, I don't know how familiar you are with St. Jen, but it's on Merchant's Gate. And if a car parks on each side, you gotta bolt your mirrors in to get through it.
The great thing about us, we have this antique wall here. So a lot of folks step down here to this antique wall, they're gonna be passing through your store, and they're gonna see some good signage, something out there, right? And they're gonna see your store, and that might bring you some business here. But they're an anchor here, and I think St. Mary's would be a good place for you to put a store. So I'm for it.
We're just, we're just open, it, it don't rain anymore. I'm gonna ask you something, though. Now, is Welker, is Welker gonna allow your, your customers to park on the bank parking lot?
Yes, yes. We also simply can have our trucks unloaded in the back with the, or a truck.
Main thing, no clutter on the street.
Yeah, right.
So you guys have to make more.
Go for it, yeah.
You gotta make more.
I make more than what I'm doing.
Okay.
I'll say it in a minute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you're in. Good to have you. Welcome aboard.
Okay, now we, now we just gotta get the licensing section. You talk to this man right here.
Anything, pardon?
Talk to him, he's here during the day.
Yeah, we have to have, have an inspector. I don't look inside.
Right now, it's not gonna pass. The good thing on this, at least.
We're gonna.
We're gonna take it down to the original floors.
Yeah, all over the pile and stuff. Anytime that gets wet and dries out, always. We're just, we're just gonna tear it out and go back to the main, the original floor.
Yeah, let's go when you make your, your.
You ready?
Well, yeah, whatever you guys, if you got it the way you want it, then see David, either apply or read or something, or whatever, with the inspector for you.
So we can start ASAP, you can do it up.
There you go. All right.
Get it done. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll see you around.
Thank you for coming. We have to pass ordinance number 934. Motion, approach first reading.
So 934, I'm sorry I'm late. What was 934?
No, it's, it, what we do every year, right? Every, yeah, every other year, it's, uh, it's formality.
Are we gonna pass it from alley?
Okay.
Yeah.
Since prison. I don't think I did well in prison, I'm telling you right now.
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote for that, 934.
That, hears that, I think I'm gonna say that.
Yes.
Okay, roll call for first reading. No, Bill 934. Alden Klein, got you.
Aye.
Alden Rose, Rose and Gray.
Aye.
Alden Brian Helm.
Aye.
Alden Paul Franklin.
Aye.
Okay, reading, first reading of Bill 934. In order to submit to St. Mary's authority to establish a procedure to disclose potential confidence and interest of substantial interest for certain officials.
We need a motion to make a second reading.
I'm making motive for second reading of order from 934.
Roll call for second reading, Alden Klein, got you.
Aye.
Alden Rose, Rose and Gray.
Aye.
Alden Brian Helm.
Aye.
Alden Paul Franklin.
Aye.
Second reading of Bill 934. In order to submit to St. Mary's authority to establish a procedure to disclose potential confidence and interest of substantial interest for certain officials.
Now we need motion to approach our next one.
We need motion to approach our next one, 934.
I second that.
All right, roll call going for approval. Alden Klein, got you.
Aye.
Alden Rose, Rose and Gray.
Aye.
Alden Brian Helm.
Aye.
Alden Paul Franklin.
Aye.
Putting that.
Those are the shelters? $13,775. Aye.
Pass the number 5. What's that, number four?
For, uh. Split more and put there a little bit of paper. Out. Uh, do that little way, link it up.
You're showing eight blocks going down to the curb, right?
Yeah.
Here's bowling, $11,785.
You know, I want to say something about this, we're trying to bring, give money to give a vote, right? Maybe something here. We've been a bunch of people. And we talked about some other things we have in the budget, like this time, so we're trying to pay more. Uh, those employees working, or something like that last, last period. How much money is, uh, we're looking at paying this week?
Where's your month on?
Yeah, month on. I just wanna bring that up. Here we are.
Let's finish this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, before we.
Money here.
Yeah, right. We, we, we always look at these things, I mean, money always comes out. I'm not, I'm watching that, just adding something, just getting in there. There's all kinds of money to spend around here, but we're gonna spend money for, for. If we will.
That's for the road.
Yeah.
This can only be used for the road.
I'm asking a question of some new guys.
I'm telling you.
We, we have a new contract with the county, that we take care of our own roads.
Yeah.
And they like, every quarter, they give us like a, I don't know, like $2,500 to $3,000. But they go to a separate account, and it can only be used for roads. We can't use it for, you know, a lot of which now is doing.
I tell you.
I don't, that's why I asked the question, I knew that, I wouldn't know unless I asked.
Yeah.
And now I'm for shit. We're going.
I would, uh.
Do you wanna make a motion to reject or what do you say tonight?
I would have to check on it.
We need a lot cheaper.
Yeah, a lot cheaper. I'm like, I'm checking that on.
My second, he's telling me, geez.
All in favor?
Aye.
John?
You're cool.
John, Fred.
All right. I know, for years, couple months ago, and then go for, uh. Basically, what I wanna do is program back up, try to pass it. Uh, for, you know, we need some personal, we need some reserves and, you know, we didn't access for it. We can't get it out of town. Uh, we have so many folks coming up, we don't know how many people are hanging out, there could be tons, and I need help. Um, I just wanna see what you guys have been on that, so if we can pass it.
You need to let you guys speak it.
Oh, yeah, that's Austin, he's gonna speak, or, or reserve programs.
Uh, my name's Austin. I've been in and out of reserve programs pretty much my whole, been doing police work for about five, four or five years. It's all been in reserves. Um, I ran pretty much the whole reserve program for Iron Mountain Lake. City about the same size as this. It's, other than, strictly other than the insurance, it's 100% free. All the equipment, everything will be donated from the higher patrol, um, through Department of Public Safety, everything. Other than, like I said, the insurance, that's the only cost for the guys to do it, everything for free. Um, and it's very good when dealing with issues like, I talked to Sean a few times through the flood stuff. And about all the things that was going on was mentioned to him, how the reserve programs work. Um, each agency kinda sets up their own rules. Uh, mine was, I think we did 20 hours a month that the reserves were required. If they wanted to have their license, they had to come down and put in 20 hours without being paid. And there's a lot of guys that, like me, I had a full-time job, but I just wanna keep my license, that will come down and do it. So, they said it's, it's a very good program, there's a lot of resources with that, there's a lot of grant money out there for it. That will bring in money for, just for police side stuff.
And also, also these, these reserve offices are strictly for traffic laws, the orders, they're, I'm doing the orders violations.
Right.
Uh, they're gonna do.
Traffic laws and if they're involved.
Yeah, if, cause if, if we agree with this, I'd rather these guys just stick with traffic and don't even get involved with ordinances.
Yeah, the orders violation is gonna be made.
So are you gonna?
And this is all, uh, this is, and this, with the insurance of what, only 50 bucks a year?
For, for, for two reserve offices, it was 50 dollars, so I'm assuming it's 25, I had.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So when you say that you are going to only do, are you only going to do the ordinances, or are you going to still do when you're here?
Oh, I'm doing traffic animals, they're, they're just gonna do mainly traffic.
Only whenever they're.
And patrol, like patrol labor and stuff like that. I'm, I'm doing that.
I'm kinda curious. First thing I said was, this, uh, something, you know, gonna have a eclipse, and you need help. That's what I'm dying to think.
Yeah, it's a huge thing. Yeah, I mean, it's a huge thing, by the way. Uh, you know, we already know that we could actually get 25 or 35,000 people in this county here at Eclipse. And I just talked to the, uh, folks in St. Genevieve, and it's already here, and folks are coming here. And people are working campers, and St. Louis have driven them down here to have campsites in St. Genevieve while they do this. So what it, what that does is it brings us good economy, it brings us people buying stuff at the store, and people doing, staying at Bed and Breakfast and everything else. But also brings a little bit of order we need to have with people from outside the area. So we need to have somebody here that's gonna respect our laws, the person that represents us, but also respect the people that are here and keep order. So I'm, I'm thinking that I'm for that, since we're gonna have so many people in this town. I mean, just, you use that as an example. But after that's over with, of course, then how do you play, what role do you play after a big event like Eclipse?
Just an everyday, normal thing.
Yeah. All right, so, so you're working full-time, and you're here, and these guys are gonna come in during your off time? Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're gonna come all night.
Are we?
Uh, weekends, nights when I'm not here, anytime I'm not here, there's, they're gonna come in and work.
And who's, who, okay, you're talking about, uh, all of the equipment and everything is done through the state.
Yes.
So they supply you with everything that you need?
Everything but your firearm. Uh, firearms come from the federal government, and they will only supply for paid guys. So like Sean, he would be able to get a, a paid, any kind of firearm if he wanted through them. But ballistic vests, pretty much anything you can think of, all the way down to the uniforms. I have pretty good contacts with the higher patrol, and I literally would call the guy I know with higher patrol and say, hey, I just put on four guys, I need uniforms. And we drive to Jeff City, and he has a pallet full of uniforms, vests, anything you can think of.
So you're telling me that you are not allowed to carry a firearm?
Yes, I can.
You can?
Yes, what it is, is we have to supply it.
I have a rifle.
Okay.
But you have one.
Yes.
So do you, you have one also?
Oh, wow, I'm here to support.
Oh, sorry.
But basically what it would be, and just so people are clear, as far as the state is concerned, there is no such thing as a reserved office, a reserve officer anymore. But cities or different jurisdictions may have reserve officers. The state got a reserve officer classification years and years ago. So reserve officers, reserve officers have the same training, they go to the same academies as a full-time officer anywhere else. Um, there used to be what was called Class R certification for reserve, and they had 120 hours of training. Their authority was limited to being within their jurisdiction, that kind of thing. That's all gone. So when we talk about reserve officers, they're still full-blown police officers with all statutory arrest authority throughout the state of Missouri. All of that. It's a classification really for a jurisdiction or a city like this, or, I think St. Jen County has some reserve guys, I mean, not a lot, and I don't know if, what they use them for. A lot of places will use them for specific tasks, whether it's, uh, court work, or if you wanna say traffic, or things like that, or events. Uh, St. Jen used to bring in a lot of reserves for juror fat. And, I mean, they would come in for other times, but for juror fat, they had, you know, a dozen or more guys on. And a lot of those were reserves that they would bring in for that, that's a once-a-year thing. I know the eclipse is a, well, there's another one in seven years, so it's not that far away, but, uh. That's just one example of what you're talking about and, or the benefits of it.
So who would you report to?
It would be to the chief.
So would he make up the time that you would need to come in, or is that a collaboration or?
The way we did it out at both agencies, pretty much the chief would say, hey, what hours can you work this month? He would have a calendar, and we'd say, I can be here Saturday, the 20th, or whatever, and he writes, can write it down on the calendar, hey, Austin, you're here the 20th. And it'd be pretty much like any other job, you, or work to your supervisor to do your scheduling.
And you said it's how many hours, 20 hours?
That's what we did there was 20.
I'm, I'm gonna require 24 hours.
24 hours? Okay, I just, my concern is I don't want that to interfere with your 40 hours. And I know that, you know, we've talked about that before, meaning, um, some weekends, some nights for you.
Yeah.
You know, and that's where I wanna know, who do they need to report to, as far as what their hours are gonna be, those kinds of things. Because I don't want that to be their number one priority thing, that, you know, that still needs to be you for.
One other thing I'll object, it brings in other people's knowledge and experience. So even if you have somebody with, if your chief had twenty years' experience, nobody knows everything. And when you have other people, you have other, you bring in their knowledge, their experience, and frankly, for the officer, your backup. Yeah.
And this guy right here is giving her answers, so.
Yeah.
So this insurance you're talking about, this insurance protects the city of St. Mary and protects the officer?
It's chief.
I mean, you're, you're considering two reserves, right?
That's right, not two reserves.
It's a pretty good workshop.
Well, you guys gotta make a decision.
Well, I'll make a motion to go for it.
Alright, let's think of that motion.
Well then, Jayden.
Aye.
Look forward to it.
If I can break forth, you are first.
Alright. Um, I've been busy talking to CMA, the State Emergency Management Agency, uh, actually three different branches. Um, the Flood Plan Assessment Branch, what I'm gonna do, these things called substantial damage estimates. So I had to download this program, put in information about how does that damage, you know, this work footage and had it within such as office, we have information as well. I completed four of them, um, and sent those to the state, so that we know what damage was and if they can provide us anything like that, maybe pull up the oldies and what's the damage, you know, they count. For, for vital parts and stuff, so, just preliminary stuff. I also talked to a, a CMA team regarding individual systems. So we went around to the different properties that were damaged, um, and we did a, a preliminary damage assessment, if they're either affected, minor damage, or major damage or destroyed. And then they put together inventory list, went back to Jeff City, um, and if that gets approved, and they wanna set up a disaster recovery center. And so I checked with the, um, Country Music Association, they're having their board meeting tonight, and we're gonna see if we can have permission to set up a disaster recovery center there. Which is like, two days of them handing out forms, passing information, taking input, you know, very information, you know, regarding the damages and stuff, um, for just a few days, so hopefully that will go through. And then the third group I talked to was for public assistance, and those are the ones who keep track of our expenses that we went through during the flood, like our emergency response, our, our equipment that we did, our, our overtime and stuff like that that we did. The order of the sand and the, you know, chat from fishers, all those monies, you know, that team would be taking care of that now. We haven't officially been declared yet, but you heard, today that we were, but Phil Smyer says he hasn't heard that, so I think we're gonna get declared, but I can't say that officially at this time. Probably tomorrow, though, I would say so, but, uh.
Kinda gonna let these people know, but they're up there that say they will help them.
Um, well, well, tomorrow I'll talk to the CMA people, see if they pass, and then I gotta wait to, and then once we get officially declared, then I'll tell Phil Smyer, hey, it's all agreed, like, what day do you wanna do this? So, that way we can kinda get everybody out, get us paid, get the citizens taken care of, you know, so I'm not, I'm with this, hope this thing goes through. Uh, and then I spoke with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, they're putting in a grant to do, um, Narcan training. Where's when people are overdosing on opioids, it's a way to, you know, inject them to the nasal or, you know, IV, or IV, syrens, um, to get their organs back functioning. So, and it's for firefighters, emergency responders, um, everybody but paramedics basically, so if you, you know, if you're the police department, fire department, I myself, we, we, we get to train, we put it up for eight, eight people. So hopefully we can get that going on too, so, uh, that's what I've been working on, so that's all I have.
Okay, water and service.
Okey-dokey water, sure, Sam, we're all good.
Uh, we had to replace a grinder and a harness and a float, and it did lot repairs on three of the grinders, and that's it.
Okay, we need Parkinson's therapy for that. Mr. Reed Gordon. Frankie, guard, guard.
Uh, we had two call-ups this past month, two brush fires, um, everything is, uh, we took the pump off the back of fifty-one, our tanker. We're just, uh, getting ready to go to the edge, um, down flying on it now, uh, pretty bright on that and everything. So technically, the tanker is still operational, we just gotta fill the tank up before we can leave the fire hospital. And anyway, I'm, uh, the other thing is. We're gonna be going to the parade, we're gonna be going to the parade tomorrow, with the new truck, and I'm, uh.
What's parade?
Uh, the county fair parade tomorrow, uh, we're gonna take the new truck up there, and, uh, hang a flag up, uh, this for heroes of the towns.
Thanks for turning that on, that felt good.
I know it did, but I, people can't hear.
I got a question for Frankie, Frankie, when we get into this, uh, thing about tearing this house down, down, what just needs to be done? Is there a way the fire department can help us raise some money and, uh, we try to put this thing together, because we're gonna need some money from everybody?
Well, the thing that is, I mean, we do two hundred a year for ourselves to help us with it. Now, I mean, I got ways to do things, but it's having the crew there to help do it. Cause we actually talked about putting on a fish fry or something for when we eat those houses. But I don't know if I'm gonna get the guys here to do it, because basically, we're in a rocky north place here, because we're gonna be, I can already see it now, August twenty-first is gonna be hot, I can see it there. The other thing is, we're gonna be called out for heat exhaustion and our radio traffic is gonna be to a minimum, uh, because of all the cell phones, towers and everything, you know, being used constantly. Uh, so that there, I mean, we can figure out ways to do.
Well, the, the, I, I'm witness here, you know, with our fire department, is we have churches and we got people who got businesses and everything else, but when I go down there and, and watch the barbecue at the fire department, I see everybody come and support that. Everybody comes there regardless of what their religion is and what they're doing here, they support our fire department. That's a big community effort, that's huge.
Well, see, a lot of that there and beyond, you're wrong, a lot of the people that shows up there, now there's a handful that's outside, that comes, others, the fire department's coming to support brotherhood of fire department, fire department. But a lot of the people are fire dieharders that actually come in too, so, you know, they come and support because we're their fire department, we're gonna have to go put their house out or whatever, so.
Well, there's my office up, so you can go ahead.
Do you, uh, when you guys have these barbecues, do you use the news, the, the radio to, um, announce those things or?
Yeah, we put it on the radio, we put it in the newspaper, we put it on Facebook, since I got, uh, Fire Department Facebook page now, I put it on there. Uh, send it out to all the fire departments, they put it out for us. Uh, I put a lot, like last year, the past couple times, I went to Cape, I put a lot down in Cape Buckeyes, Buckeyes out there a little, cause we do been to Buckeyes, so. But I don't know who's in and out, who's from out of town coming to do that. Now, the thing we did a year, or two years ago, we had a hundred, sixty mile, sixty-one mile yard, so we had supplies, I only needed two of us, that people just wanted to get rid of. We put a minimum price on it and we sold a lot of stuff, we did make alright with that, and that went to equipment. That's just like when you do a boot, you're out on the island, that goes for equipment too, so.
I guess the question I'm asking is, we've got something big to do here, and we need to come together and get this house torn down in town. And that means businesses, churches, these fire departments, fire departments, everybody needs to be involved and try to collect enough money to get this thing tore down. And Gloria, I think we can do it if we get everybody involved. If we need somebody else, you're not trying to raise any money, church might not be trying to raise, if somebody else is trying to raise, this is, wanna come together effort to get this thing done. If we're not gonna use city money, which we don't have to do it. So I guess that was my question, is if we're gonna all be in on this, we need our police chief, our fire chief, our churches, our priests, our ministers, our business owners, and then our community to raise enough money to get this done. And I think we can get it, I think we can get that money easy, but we need to make a date to make that happen. We need to advertise to make it happen and we need everybody involved, and that's just my question. Oh, yeah, glad to see that you are willing to be supportive.
Do we have a timeframe that this has to be taken care of? No? Okay, so it's not like we have to just make a decision and get paid for it first and then see what kind of money we come up with?
No, no.
No?
I do have one more thing though, cause we are, we are looking into, uh, the literature's house over here, it got bought and by Mr. Wyatt. And anyways, we're gonna be training in that house because it's still capable of entering, unlike that house there, it's, I'd be afraid, cause the foundation worked on it. Anyways, it started crumbling when we fighting the fire, so we didn't, should be able to fight it. And anyways, I'm, uh, but what we're gonna do, like this one here, we're gonna have control burn. So we're, we're burning all the lumber up and everything basically, and keeping it controlled, so it don't expand anywhere. And we're gonna have a lot of burns in there too, you know, putting them, put them out, you know, like actual training if you're on fire or something. So something like that one down there, I don't know, I'd have to talk to a few of the other fire chiefs in the county and see what they say on their opinions about that, because with it being close proximity between each other of houses, something like that one, it ain't really close to another structure that close like that one is down there. Now, we could probably burn it and let it drop in, and then the cleanup work would be a lot less, but that's.
It'd be hard to drop in.
And it could fall this way, there's nothing coming in brick. So what happens then if, say, we can't get enough money to get this house taken care of, then what do we, what do we suppose we're gonna do then? Do we need to look for another victim, finish the job, or? Well, the city can pay some of it, can't they, if we get enough?
Yep, we've got somebody, not a lot, and we've got CDs, if you wanna play with those. We can match some funds, six thousand eight hundred dollars.
You know this lie though. But that didn't, you know. You know.
Maybe I have to call Jen and ask her if they can cover it.
We can maybe cover him. I would.
That's just, I think the whole town would be helpful and involved, it'd be a good community effort and bring the community together to try to do something like that. So my, my feeling is, is that if we can try to keep everybody involved in it, then it'll be a community effort, it'll get done. If we only raise thirty-five hundred dollars in our community through our churches, our businesses and everybody else in this drive, and we have to match thirty-five hundred dollars, then we should do that. And we should do, that would be the biggest, uh, beautification project that we're gonna be probably ever gonna establish to get rid of that house, that is just terrible.
And the, the other question on that too, I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of farmers around here, and I know a lot of them got excavators. And I know, like behind the Baptist church, they're trying to fill that in back there, you know, and stuff too, from washing the drop or the parking lot out. And anyway, so we put a lot of backfill in back there from when we do work for the city, cause Brother Brooks gives us permission to do it, since he's over the church. Now, I don't know if there's any farmers around here, I know there's quite a few that got excavators and dump trucks. And the thing that it is, is if I'm, uh, maybe see what they would do, cause I know they're really good with excavators, I mean, so.
I think Darren's got one, ain't he?
I think he got one, I'm not sure.
So that we have liability, so that we, any of that?
Well, what they have to do, they would have to sign, or protect our city, they would have to sign a paper.
Okay.
They were not.
And I'm sure they got insurance running that big equipment like that, I mean, you know, just.
Well, I guess I'm, because my concern is, like you were talking, getting all these people coming in and helping out, you guys don't feel it's safe for you to get in there? And I know that, you know, you got these big machines that will plow over and that kind of stuff, you know.
And that's basically what this company that you guys are talking about, they're just gonna come in with a very big excavator and they're just gonna shove the walls in and start pulling out debris. And then whatever's in the basement, that's still, and they're gonna dump rock and dirt all over it. That's normally how they do buildings, I've watched some good.
So do you think it's possible that we should burn that out, even though we're gonna have to go in there, burn it out and then knock it out, or?
We possibly, probably could look into doing it, we'd have to just see what the house layout, you know, looks like. Cause I mean, you're, when we started the fire, everything was in it, because the mortar and then the bricks and everything started to deteriorate, so. This side of the house was fired, but that mortar, it actually fell, everything fell on that side. Now, the front was still stable, so like, you know, so I can't really.
That roof on that front, that's not very, it's, it's keep dying more and more.
Yeah.
I see it every day, I walk out my door, like, is that thing gonna go?
And see, the only way you could actually turn that out to make it false centered, is you'd have to start it and, and burn the main beam wall out to let it cave in, so only way you're gonna do it.
Can you do that without entering it?
Probably not, unless we go through a side window or something, but that's, that's all you're gonna do.
Cause I don't know how you guys would do that, I don't know, I'm not familiar with how to use.
Well, see, that's the thing, I'd have to go down there, it's been over two years now, I don't know what the structure is looking like. I mean, we did go inside and whenever we fought the fire, we went on the front side, we wasn't on the back side. So that's, you'd have to look at it, I mean, that's the only thing you can do.
Well, I mean, in my opinion, I think we need to see what time we can come up with, from the community or surrounding first, see what we can do before we put you guys in jeopardy, or anybody else.
Or you even have to ask them, because if we could get the outside contractor to do it, why not? You know?
Let's just agree tonight here, that I'm gonna check around and anybody who comes in, to see if we can get any alcohol in churches or, it doesn't bother me. And I'm sure Brian will.
Yep, and I, and I think what we should do is we should have a plan, Gloria, and I'd like to come back and talk to you about that plan.
You sure can.
How we can approach it, even if we have to go to our newspaper in St. Genevieve and, uh, make an announcement about what we'd like to do and how we'd like to get the community involved in it, because I think we can raise enough money to take care of that. And I think.
I wouldn't bet on it.
Yeah, well, not all of it, I think the city could probably come up, but we do have some good businesses here, we have the antique mall, we have the nursing home, we have the business, we have the store, we have my business and your business.
My opinion is, if we do things to make the money on our own, we're gonna be better off.
Yeah.
Than trying to get it from everybody else.
Well, you mean as far as the citizens?
Yes.
I think, I think there'd be some donations there, I think you'd be surprised. But, um, and we have to let the community get involved, I think that might be our first move toward.
Getting involved.
Getting involved. So, I'd like to come back and talk to you, Mayor, about that after this meeting, maybe next week, maybe before our next meeting, and put something together, and maybe we can just announce to our community through our stores and through flyers, and maybe through the newspaper, that this is something we wanna do.
Okay, but we'll do that.
And that's why I gave you a call the other day, so I'll follow up on that.
Okay, we're, that's done, we're gonna do the police department report.
Mayor, we're gonna nerve a grant today, this came in, uh, from southeast collision, uh, for roadway safety, it's a three hundred eighty-four hour overtime funding grant. And you guys have in your packets the traffic citation list from two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, also the city sticker, no, city ordinance violation, it's definitely resolved, it's still active. You guys got any questions with that?
I do. Um, how do, how do we know that these things have been resolved, how did you go about doing that? Now, I know city stickers, they come through a net, um, the, you have tall grass, debris, motor vehicles, those kinds of things, how are those, when you say the result, how do we know that they're resolved?
You go by, you go by the property check through your ice pledge, like a zero vehicle, you go by and check, see if they got their ice pledge reviewed, if they did, that's how I check.
Okay.
Uh, the tall grass, um, like there's one on Southern Road that I issued a citation to, and, uh, went over, checked the yard and just cut.
Okay. My, my other thing is, um, you said we can go by and check some of these, now some of these I have gone by and checked. Some of these say they have been resolved, but they're not. There is one, um, the nine sixty on four, nine sixty fourth street, there's a yellow truck in a shed, it's halfway out, no license on it. Um, but it says it's been resolved.
You said nine sixty fourth street is under a car or?
But it has to be enclosed.
It has to be enclosed, there's enough, but it said it's underneath a shed.
But even, but it's not.
If, if it's tar or underneath a shed.
It's half, half of it, it's not under the shed.
It's taking half out.
Yes.
It's taking half out.
Yes, I mean, there are, there are a few other ones, and I don't wanna go into detail right now, and some over here, but, um, I was just curious as to know how you, you know, go along and say some of them. but, um, I was just curious as to know how you, you know, go along and say that some of them are resolved and some that aren't, you know, some are active, still active. Now, are those active, when you said are active, those have been, you know, citation?
The ones that, yeah, you got citation, or they're just giving a painting or something sticker.
Okay, like, as far as debris and trash, says this one is still active. Uh, it's on the back, it's on Locust Street.
Yes, watch his name, the word is...
And you thought it was a citation?
Okay, so as of, this shows as of, when was this printed out?
Uh, six, I believe it was on 2/26.
Okay, so it's printed out now, and then as of 7/26, these should all be, the ones that are active, and some that are not, should be resolved.
It should be, but they're going to come to the next court date, some of them are actually on the court date.
Docket?
Yeah, and they'll come in and, you know, put your case.
So how, so how would I know that, if I looked at this, would I know that? I mean, would I know if they're on the docket, or?
Yeah, not, not with this, you wouldn't.
Not to be at this, I would?
No.
Okay.
I would try to do most of them resolved, though, but there's a couple of them right around here, the tall grass, they're actually making laws, that I have no idea who comes to the property.
Right, and I know that one that's, um, they're on 699 is Screw Street. Somebody did try to come in there and try to cut some of that, but they never did get to finish it out, because it's, it's starting to grow again. Like, they did try to cut some of that down.
You said it was 699?
Yes, yes. Right, right next to that, yeah.
Is that, is that the banking office? One next to that?
Uh, no, basically, except I even had to...
See, so much of the bank on that, so I didn't...
They're probably going to end up on, but it's right now, he won't.
Okay.
He would have to send it to the manager. He would have to send it, I would quit.
And then on these, this is the citation list that you've given so far as January of this year, June, or?
You know the 2017 one?
Yes.
Yeah, January.
Okay, January through June.
Boy, keep up that reputation of a speed zone.
Now, I'm like, curious, and whenever it has issued, green is issued, and then you have something void, what, what's the difference?
The ones that void either, some of them that actually came in and took care of their risk violations real fast, I don't know, because they took care of it right away.
Okay, so then the other ones that are issued, are those on the docket that then are been paid or not been paid?
Well, I mean, so, well, yeah, well... Some of them like, are from... So, there's on there. Some of them actually probably on the next docket too. And some of them haven't paid.
And some haven't paid. So is there any way that you would, if you were to print this out for us again, would we be able to know which ones have been paid or not, or?
Yeah, I can do that, I can have a day and see.
Is a ticket being paid, I'm irresponsible, this is due to a judge?
Day is when they come in to pay it.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I'm the court clerk, so if they want to come pay, you know, either before court or after court, then I'll, I'll take the money. I also have dockets, if you want to see who's on the dockets.
Yeah, it's like the payment box.
So, yeah, and then in your packet, you've got like, you know, who, like, like the case numbers, and who's paid, and stuff like that.
Because I thought, boy, there's an awful lot, and then those are January through June, now, I'm saying that one. But if I know who is, if all of these have been taken care of, some that they care of, or?
Well, no, most, it depends, uh, and, and yeah, since going to police chief, who's perhaps in court every month, and I said every other month, it's a lot more work on me, the judge, you know, because we're doing a lot more volume. The problem we're having is state regulations that Ferguson, they're taking a lot of teeth out of a lot of our enforcement, power, but the same, you know, the missing, that's the thing, yeah, but I think it's a lot harder to get these traffic. But collection is not the chief of police's job.
Oh, no, you can't give an input.
And, uh, we don't really, all you need to do is write that in, and then what you need to do is collect.
I collect the money, I can take quick books, and then I can talk to, you know, with the dockets, all that.
Yeah, pretty much what I do every time, is take it every day, I get my taxes, and I make a pretty sad, uh...
It's like you're doing a lot of figure writing.
Anybody here want to hear about animal control?
Yeah. He, he wants to...
Let's move along, people, my alarm.
You got questions, you got things we want to add?
She's representing a whole ward here, we have to answer the answer.
We all got places to go beneath the street. Let's get a show on the road here, folks, let's go, what's up there?
This is the law enforcement mail, that tells me all the laws that char people live. Um, it's a funny buzz, pretty much what you can get, it's like char people. But I need, but I need to know the char people, that, uh, stay in the room, that's what I want.
Yep. Are you going to do that? Yeah.
And looking through.
Oh, one more thing, I hear the phone in your house.
And looking through.
Uh-huh. Nothing to report.
It's not probably good lighting for it, nothing to report. He just wants to be able to talk.
Okay, citizens, go to the...
Question, question.
Right, I need to shut up, you two talk.
All right, question that we talked about last time with, um, the animal, the, the new safety end, take where they pick their own animals, have we come up with any more suggestions?
We said we didn't, they were exactly what it is, you know?
Right, but I mean, as far as, have we come up with any more, uh, what we're going to do with the pens down there? Has anything went forward with that? I mean, I know we talked about making new pens down there, getting some new shelters.
We haven't had any violations since then, right? Or anything else?
Dead one.
I don't know.
We got two pens, I hope.
That ought to be enough, that, that would be cabin very soon.
Okay.
Very soon.
They got the roof long or something?
No, they don't have the roof long. We'd have to actually pick the pens up, the reset, put some, some gravel underneath that, you know? You're, probably put a bar塞, like we had in the old way. First year we had a new charcoal, probably. Have a shed.
Well, they got those, what? Barrels, yeah, barrels.
Yeah, and about your house, 50 gallons barrels, if you got your barrels, the doghouse in there. That's what, are you there? So like, what am I, what's... Damn, sir.
Is there any citizen protection page, and I would like to play in here, so?
I'm going to be doing that, I'm going to look.
I said it, Gloria. Aye.
That was a good meeting.
That's the longest meeting you guys had in ages.
Yeah, this is, this is getting completely out of hand, we got a shot.
My damn battery went down one notch.